We're gonna call the meeting to order here in just a minute.
We're good.
How many do we have on Zoom?
Uh, nobody.
Nobody. At this time, we will call this meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee DeBorgh.
Here.
Trutshall.
Here.
Fiker.
Here.
Walsh Fiker.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Holcquiff.
Here.
President Fannerstill.
Here. If you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee Trutshall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone will get a chance to speak whether they signed up on the sheet or not. If we can please try to keep it to three minutes. That would be much appreciated. The first name that we have on the list is Keith Vandel Arshat for Public Comment.
Good evening.
Hello.
I'm here this evening on behalf of Waukesha State Bank. And as I think many of you know, the bank owns the roughly three acre parcel at 550 Hartbrook Drive. And over the last few weeks, there's been significant conversation and speculation on this parcel. So the bank asked me to come this evening and relay what their position is on this parcel. The bank's current position is that this, that is, if the village decides that this is ultimately the best place for you to build your police station, for the protection and safety of the residents of the village of Heartland, and if the bank receives fair and reasonable compensation, then the bank is prepared to respect the process of eminent domain, and we won't take any steps to unduly delay or postpone the process. The bank stands ready to negotiate in good faith with the village to try and come up with some kind of a resolution that's mutually beneficial for both parties. And they wanted me to share that with you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Keith. The next name, I don't, no, the last name, the next name we have is Lori.
I'm 615 Ray Drive. So, you know, after our last meeting on the 28th of July, I kind of went through a few things. I sent Jeff all of my notes here of questions I've been getting asked by a lot of people. And one of them was, were we still considering the land? And if the eminent domain process started, I take it it hasn't. So, and then the other things were with the police department and village hall and fire department, that was 28 million. Is that 26% that the taxpayers, taxpayers will have to pay, that their amount will increase if it was 26% or not? Never got an answer. So I would like to have that answered at some point. And after looking at the Village of Heartland Comprehensive Plan and the Court Plan, which is the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, it looks like Hartbrook Park should not even ever have been considered. And these two comprehensive plans were never talked about in any meeting. And I guess I'd like to find out where it's going to be talked about because dating back to 2019, it never said that it could be used for building. And in lieu of all the flooding that's been going on, it's probably not a good site. And also to do with the grant funding restrictions, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up. There's been a lot of money put into that park. Do we have to repay it if something would go through? And also, the risk of setting a harmful precedent with using the park, does that then allow you to build on all the parks? Or not? I don't know. So, and also, I'm just wondering if you would tear down the, this building here. I heard that you're going to replace it with apartments. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what the word is. So, that's all I wanted to say. I don't know how I'm going to get my answers because you guys can't respond. But I'm hoping I can, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd come on Wednesday or the other information session if you could, or set up a personal meeting. We'd be happy to answer all of them. As I said in my email, when I emailed you back. The next name that we have is Nicole, I'm going to say Diedrich, is that correct?
Well, I'm here to discuss 3D.
Okay.
That's okay.
No, no, no.
Oh, no, if you're, you're on the agenda, we'll pull you up at that time. And then we have Karen is on here.
Hi, good evening. Karen Wardenby, 602 River Meadow. And I think we all saw the rain that happened the last couple of days. And I hope you saw some of the pictures of Hartbrook Park. And if we fill that with a village hall and all the blacktop right up to the, over the flood plain, what do we think that's going to do to the river in the future? Right now, we have that green space to absorb a lot of that water, and we still had extensive, extensive flooding. And so I'm just asking you all, as residents of Heartland, be respecters of that river. We have a blessing in having that river come through our area. The other thing is, I've been out in the community talking to a lot of people and trying to alert them what's going on and trying to save the park. And everybody I talked to said, I don't have any problem supporting our police and fire. They do a wonderful job for our village. And we all appreciate what they're doing, but we want to do it so that it's the right location. Let's not rush into this and take up our green space and take up our park. It's just really foolish. I have just from one of the senior buildings on Sunny Slope, I have over 50 petition signatures. Everybody is against this. We need to respect some of the people that live in the community. I know you're thinking because they live in the area, they don't have a voice. But I'm telling you, that's just one of the building. I have another 45 signatures from the senior building next to it. Those are a lot of people. There's probably not that many apartments even in those buildings. It's 100%. People use that park. And we shouldn't be taking it away. So I hope you're going to really say that this rain that we got, maybe it was a wake-up call to the village, and I hope they heard it. And the eminent domain, why can't we just, if Waukesha State Bank is willing to work with us, why do we have to go through the eminent domain process? Why can't we just buy it from them? Really? Why spend the money and the legal fees to go through that whole hoop of eminent domain and waste time and energy? Let's move forward. The people in the village, everybody I talked to, is not opposed to that site. So let's move in that fashion. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else, even if you did not sign up on the list, that would like to speak in public comments? Thank you for all of you that spoke. At this time, we have two meetings that we have to approve minutes for. We have the first meeting with the, which is July 28th, 2025. This is that CIP meeting that we have. If you want to just touch on what we're, the CIP, it's our.
Yeah, the CIP meeting is just where we go through and talk about our future road paving and any large future projects. So that was discussed at that meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the July 28th CIP minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 28th CIP meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I abstain.
That motion is carried. Then we have the July 28th Village Board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve July 28th, 2025 Village Board meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the July 28th Village Board meeting. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items related to the vouchers. We have consideration of vouchers for payment in the amount of $700,140.47.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of $700,140.47.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the payment of the vouchers.
I have a couple of questions. And I'm sorry I didn't get to ask these earlier. The traffic, Police is for the police department, the new traffic, the speed sign we have, that was, is it Traffic Logix? Do you know anything? No? Okay.
Yeah, I do. So that's a new speed sign.
But didn't we get a grant for that?
We did. So what we have to do is we have to purchase it. We submitted the invoice to the company for that, and then they will give us that money back. But with accounting principles, we have to put the revenue in revenue and expense in expense.
I just wanted to make sure that was the one we were talking about.
From the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, yes.
Okay. And then I may as well just ask you, Ryan.
Sure.
The, I noticed the mat services are on here again. We are, are we still looking at canceling that contract when it comes up for renewal?
Yeah, Sandy's actually, I believe, looked at some other vendors as well, because it is, it is one of those things. It was a three-year contract. She knows how much time we have and we'll just start looking.
How much time do we have? Do you know offhand?
Yeah, it expires in 26.
Okay.
I want to say fall.
Okay. And this question is going to be, I don't even think we can answer this, but I saw in here for buildings and grounds for RZ Heating and Cooling for the community center, we spent $7,480.
It's a new air conditioner that just went.
So we, oh.
Yeah, we had a police department without air conditioning and, and a community center without air conditioning.
Okay. Well, then I guess we have to. I just saw that amount, and I thought, you know, if we're going to be moving, but that'll be another, what, two years or more at least, right?
Correct.
Okay, never mind that one then. And that was all I had. Thank you.
On discussion and just kind of dealing off of what you said, with those types of expenses, those are the kind of expenses that, and we kind of know this, having gone through this, the need study, these are the kind of expenses that we're going to start to see over and over and over again as we're in, in the building where things fail. And then we're, you know, putting it into that because we know we have a lot of things failing.
There were more in there, I just, yeah.
Yep. No, I agree with you. I just, I'm just noting that that's
Oh.
the kind of thing we're running into, so.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the, on the vouchers? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have review and considerations, items related to licenses and permits, the first being consideration of a special event application for the pumpkin party in the park on Saturday, October 11th, 2025.
I'm Andy, this is Jake. We're co-chairs for the Pumpkin Party in the Park event. It'll be the second year. I don't know if most of you went last year, but it's going to be pretty much the same. We're going to have a pumpkin river float and a haunted trail walk, hopefully a hay bale maze. We're going to have a pumpkin catapult hopefully this year, just a bunch of events to kind of do a fall event for the community. And we're also going to use any funds raised for the hopeful children's area remodel at the library in a year or two.
And thank you again for all the support that we got from the village last year for the event. It was really successful. Whatever anybody did to give us a 75-degree day in October last year, if you can do that again, we would appreciate it.
Well, we just got rid of all the rain, so now you're.
Yes. A one in a thousand year storm.
Yes.
Apparently, so.
Yes.
But yeah, like Jake was saying, we couldn't do it without DPW. Tom and his old team, they are crucial to this, so.
We, we reviewed this at the park board and, and it was, everybody agreed to it.
It was a great event last year. I can imagine it's going to be a great event.
In fact, you guys be sending out like a signup sheet to help, just like hometown.
Yes, for volunteers. Rotary is going to take care of that. And Emily with the Arrowhead School District as well is hopefully going to get volunteers to help us. Kiwanis is going to do a bunch of volunteers. And we've also already sent out the first round of sponsorship emails to hopefully have everything kind of self-funded right off the bat.
And on here, you talk about Beer Garden, Kiwanis. So Beer Garden is going to be doing beer, not food?
They'll be doing some food, but we'll, we're working with them to, yeah, have a variety of things.
We emailed Stephanie. She's going to do more like finger food. She's talking about like our charcuterie board or big pretzel stuff like that. Kiwanis is going to have more than meal food, hot dogs, hamburgers, caramel apple station, apple cider.
We have a band that night?
No, but we'll have DJ Doty. We will have a DJ there.
And a movie.
Yeah, and a movie afterwards. Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to approve the special event application for Party in the Park on Saturday, October 11th, 25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Pumpkin Party in the Park on Saturday, October 5th, or October 11th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item we have is consideration of a special events application for Arrowhead High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 10th.
Real quick, before they go, the elementary school, I believe, has post-canceled school or ending early?
They do a half-day now. Yeah, they do a half-day to work around so that we have a little more flexibility in our time.
If you recall, we kind of had bus issues in the previous, in the past. That will not be the case this year, as they're.
It's actually awesome that it's fantastic.
Yeah, it allows us to move the parade a little earlier, which allows our football team to be a part of it again. So last year, we didn't have our football team as a part of it because of the delay. We had to start a little earlier to navigate the traffic issue.
Awesome.
So, yeah, tonight serves as our annual request to host the homecoming parade, Arrowhead High School Homecoming Parade in the downtown area, continuing the longstanding tradition. Per the board's request last year, we'll continue to send postcards to, to community members who are within the vicinity of the parade just to let them know about any disruption that there would be to their lifestyle or traffic flow or their travel on that, that day.
It's a pretty quick closure, right? It's moving, so.
Yeah, it only takes us about 15 minutes to get through, so.
It's a lot easier with the school beat. That's awesome that they have a half-day, because I know that was always like the issue on the times. And now the time doesn't matter, and I know usually you guys just work with.
And we line up near the school, so it just, yeah.
Awesome.
Does DPW still put up those concrete things?
They do.
Okay, good.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application for Arrowhead High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 10th, 2025.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Arrowhead High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 10th, 2025. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Sandy, can I just get in touch with you with a spreadsheet again of addresses? And then I'll check with the police department. On the postcard, we, I do note the time that the park, that we'll put the closures up. I don't know if it was like three, what? So on the postcard, people will know what time they're not going to be able to get on the streets. So I'll just check with you guys before I send the postcard, okay?
Thank you.
Now we have a consideration of a special events application for Back to School Bash by Heartland Lakeside Education Foundation on Friday, September 12th, 2025. Who's here for that?
I am speaking on behalf of Mal from the HLEF. They currently have shelter number four reserved for their back-to-school bash. They're looking to possibly have two food trucks come for the night. I think they're looking at Kona Ice and then possibly a taco truck. This to get approved by the park board pending that their food trucks would be parked in the designated food truck area.
This is the first year they're doing this?
Yeah, first year at Nixon Park.
Okay.
And it was also approved from the Beer Garden people, right, that you were going to?
Yeah, she's been in contact with them.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion then to approve the special event application for Back to School Bash by Heartland Lakeside Education Foundation Friday, September 12th, 2025, with the provision that they relocate the food trucks.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Back to School Bash by Heartland Lakeside Education Foundation on Friday, September 12th, 2025. I guess I just will add, even though I didn't, hopefully it doesn't come across wrong, but in the future, if all of a sudden someone from the, I don't have any questions, but if someone from the board had questions, it would have to be pushed off to another meeting, and I really, really encourage that people not grab staff and say, go speak on my event for me, just throwing that in there. But I would suggest having someone here that represents it in the, in the future. Because if any questions come up, as we do with plan, commission, or anything, if it's signage, no matter what the question is, I don't know that answer, and there's no one here to speak for it. So just wanted to throw that in.
All in favor?
Oh, sorry. I was waiting for someone to take a motion, thank you, or to make a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. All opposed? That motion passes. Now we have consideration of a special events application for Fall in Line 125 Run by Titish Running on September 19th and 20th.
Hi.
Hello.
So I had a meeting last Monday that went pretty well discussing the permit for Centennial Park. My running company is planning a, it's called Fall in Line 125, but it's actually a 132-mile race. Starts in the Northern Kettles. It goes all the way to the end of the Southern Kettles, and we have 10 aid stations along the way. One of those 10 aid stations would be Centennial Park. The hours we would need it would be 9:00 PM on September 19th to about 1:45, 2 o'clock on September 20th. So we would be overnight. We are a no cowbell, no alcohol production, so it is not a party scene. At most, at one time, maybe five people will be. So I had a meeting last Monday that went pretty well discussing the permit for Centennial Park. My running company is planning a, it's called Fall in Line One Twenty Five, but it's actually a hundred and thirty-two mile race. Starts in the Northern Kettles, it goes all the way to the end of the Southern Kettles and we have ten aid stations along the way. One of those ten aid stations would be Centennial Park. The hours we would need it would be nine PM on September nineteenth to about one forty-five, two o'clock on September twentieth. So we would be overnight. We are a no cowbell, no alcohol production, so it is not a party scene. At most, at one time, maybe five people will be there at once. It might be a little less two. And we only have about fifteen runners who have signed up for this first year, so you won't really even notice we're there.
Nicole, could you comment? And, and I know I tried to have them change the date because I'm not available to run that hundred and thirty-four that weekend, but.
Yes, after four years of planning, I'm sorry I could not accommodate.
Could you tell them about how you will, if, if the times are too late, that you tell them that they can't run any longer?
Yes, yes. So the, there's a cutoff. It's forty-eight hours and twenty-two minutes to complete the hundred and thirty-two miles, so each aid station closes. So the, if, at a twenty-two minute mile, if they're not out of that aid station, the aid station closes. So runners have until one forty-two to leave that aid station, whether they just like step outside of it. But either way, by two o'clock on Saturday, we'll, we'll be packed up and gone. And we'll carry out, we won't have that much trash because we don't have that many runners, but. Uh, they have forty-eight hours and like twenty-two minutes to complete a high, it's, it's like a hundred and thirty-four miles. It's called Fall in Line One Twenty Five, because when the DNR did the math on the ice age, it was a hundred and twenty-five miles. And this year celebrates the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of Wisconsin State Parks. And we just like to really, running math gets complicated, so. But yeah, it's like closer to a hundred and thirty-four. But yeah, they start Friday at eleven AM at the Green Bush Rock and then they have until Sunday, eleven something. And closing ceremonies are at the Fuzzy Peg, which is just, it's all exclusively on the Ice Age Trail until they get that one right turn on Clover Valley Lane and then they go to the Fuzzy Peg and that's where they finish. So there'll be busts to and from. It is, it is a production. But this will be an annual event. And in two or three years, we're going to flip the course, so it will be a two sixty-five run. So then we'll be petitioning to use the Centennial Park twice within a week. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. The DNR, trust me, I just, I just really can't blow it this year and then we'll discuss the two sixty.
I would just ask to make sure that, and I'm sure you already are, but just make sure you're in contact with PD.
Yes.
To make sure that if they feel, whatever that they feel, to make sure that everybody's safe, even if it is one or five people, because of the hour, that they're, you know, that way they're fully aware and they can make sure to provide any safety that they feel is necessary.
Sure. Yeah, and you'll see them coming down across from Jillies and they'll have headlamps on, so you might see a rogue runner once or twice coming down. But yeah, so part of my permit from the DNR is to alert all medical staff before we're in the city. And we're also at the mercy of the DNR, if there's like two or more inches of rain or if the National Weather Services issues warnings, we're done. So, and I just smile and nod and.
I think that's great. It's just with the chief, with the departments here, with them knowing, that's awesome.
Yep.
Because then they're ready to go.
Perfect.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the park board thought this was kind of a cool, fun thing to do.
It's the longest point to point in the Midwest, so this is literally a historical event.
It's a long point to point.
Yeah. And as of right now, we, like I said, we have fifteen people, but this will sell out in two or three years. This will be a huge thing.
And sell out is how many?
Uh, we're gonna cap it at a hundred, no matter how big we get. Yep.
I think as long as Tim Holquist is running in it, I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, I told you I can't make that, that weekend.
All right, all right, all right.
She'll move it a week, just for you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special event application Fall in Line One Twenty Five Run by Titish Running on September nineteenth and twentieth. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the longest point to point in the Midwest, the Fall in Line One Twenty Five Run by Titish Running on September nineteenth and twentieth.
Copy of the permit in, via email? Because I submitted it a paper copy, so.
We can mail it, we'll mail it to you and we can email it as well.
Perfect, just a picture, just for my own personal records.
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Now you'll get in the mail. Now we have announcements.
Library just finished summer reading program, another successful year. We're kind of in recovery mode right now and then we're gearing up for the pumpkin event in October. And knock on wood, but we're fully staffed again.
All right, we had a lot of rain last two days. Eleven point nine one inches was the, was the mark that we had in Heartland here specifically. Police and fire helped out along with a lot of DPW staff. We had, diverting some water around some basement walls that collapsed on Hilger Farms. Our Arlene Lift Station was having a lot of trouble. We had a lot of I N I. We had a lot of DPW staff working around the clock to maintain that level.
Tom, what is I N I?
I N I is influence infiltration, so that's clear water that's produced from a rain event like this with hydraulic pressure that we had in those areas. Any little crack or joint that we had was, was pumping water into the sanitary sewer, which you don't want. That's why we do our televising and everything like that. That just adds excess to pumping and everything like that, so it's inefficient. It's hard for wastewater treatment companies to, or plants to efficiently treat the water and everything else. But we had a lot of I N I coming into Arlene Lift Station. We successfully did not have a sanitary sewer overflow, so that is really good. A lot of places in the local community and the local surrounding area did that. They were forced to. We had a tree fall on one of our well houses right after that. We had multiple callouts for water main breaks, even though there were no water main breaks. It was just all the, the water. A lot of people were having water in their basements and very concerned. We attended to those each and every single call we got for that. Our Hilger Farm subdivision suffered probably the worst just because we don't have storm sewer in that subdivision. That is a older subdivision that was set up a long time and this was definitely over the hundred year flood mark, so. We have some areas that we could potentially address in there in the future as far as maybe putting in a collection system, but that would be a, a big endeavor that we do during paving. And then just a lot of calls from local residents, concerns about water in areas that they'd never seen before, but that's gonna happen in a storm event like this. So all in all, with our new subdivisions, I would tip my hat off a lot to R and M for the designs and the persistence in stormwater design and engineering that we do in these new subdivisions. It's very important for these events and usually it's looked as a, kind of a pushback from the village as far as developers trying to come in here and develop stuff and it's kind of something that has always swayed a lot of the developers because it costs a lot of money. Stormwater management is not a cheap and easy feat, so I appreciate their efforts because it really held out for most of the village. And that's all we have. We're still cleaning up a lot of trees along the river, kind of behind Ray Drive along the path. We had a lot of trees come down there too. So just trying to get caught up and back to our normal status we're at, so.
Back on his flooding real quick. There was a, a post of the quarry and the flooding there. That was actually a retention pond working how it was supposed to. That's probably one of the best sites. It was designed perfectly. All of the water from that site went to that retention pond. So I agree with R, R and M, fantastic that that site took on eleven inches of water and everything is dry there today.
Okay, our summer camp and T-Ball programs, both are officially wrapped. Both programs went really well this summer. Now we're kind of switching gears into our fall programming. And then last week we had National Night Out, which was a big success, and I just want to thank police, fire and DPW for all their help with that. Black Hawk was a huge hit, so thank you for getting that.
All right, to kind of go with Tom, yesterday we were, we were busy also. Started out with the basement collapse up in Hilger Farms. Nobody was injured, thank God. We did a little sandbagging for her, but there, she had a ton of water running into her basement even after we did that, so. Multiple calls till probably about one thirty this morning. Lightning strike at four fifty Sunny Slope knocked out their alarm system. They had, their maintenance guy came in and stayed for fire watch and then we stopped in there today and they had a temporary system set up because it took out one of the boards. So they said they would have that all fixed and, and ready to go tomorrow. It is operational currently at this time. Just got called out for another possible wire down on West Capital, so all part of the storm stuff. We want to stress to the citizens that do not walk through standing water by the river. Do not attempt to kayak in the river. Had a family come up and ask today if it was a good idea, because their kids were asking her all day to go kayaking in the river and we said absolutely not. Tiwaki had two rescues yesterday in Fox River where a kayaker went under a bridge and didn't come out. And then multiple rescue calls today in Menominee Falls in Brookfield for people attempting to kayak the river. That is a fast water. It, one mistake and you're done. You're, you'll be a quarter mile away before you even know it. So please stay out of the water, stay out of the river and just stay safe. So that's about all we have.
Thank you.
Uh, for PD, this goes back a little ways, but WISN featured our, the PD in a piece for, related to vehicle pursuit that happened on the twenty-second of July, kind of focusing on the dangers that police face with regards to pursuits, which unfortunately, you know, in my experience, in the last five years, it's been a big uptake in police pursuits. So that's good to get out there. Chief is, was appointed to, or Chief Misko was appointed to the, as a Wiscon, this is a long one, Wisconsin Chief of Police Association Representation to the Wisconsin Department of Justice Bureau of Training and Standards Tactical Skills Advisory Committee. So. Can you say that one more time? Yeah, right. No, so that's all, it's the training standards for firearms, defense and arrest tactics and stuff like that. I think that says a lot for our department. We take that sort of stuff seriously. I think we're kind of on the cutting edge of, of the tactical response. We take training seriously. So that's a good, good assignment for him. What else? Wausau County got hit with the kind of annual string of vehicle break-ins. It happens once or twice every single year and we're not immune to that. We, we do our best to kind of get the word out early when we hear that it's happening and we put it on Facebook and stuff like that, but we did get, get hit mainly the, I think the Hilger Farms subdivision had six entries, so we're actively investigating that in cooperation with the other departments that are doing the same. And then National Night Out thing again was a big, big hit. I attended it as, you know, as a visitor and kids had a blast, so.
Yeah, and Chief Misko is in here. He's bailing out his basement.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say the same thing. It's, was a great National Night Out. A lot of people out there, saw some new ones out there and, you know, thank everybody for doing that and DPW and Fire Department for this weekend. I know you had a lot of calls. I forwarded a few to them, but everybody as usual does a great job. That's why it's great to be part of this community.
And I, I also wanted to say that that National Night Out was just fabulous. And Sam, thank you so much for going around giving everybody water. I hit you up twice for that. It was awesome. But all the vendors that were there and, you know, it was a two hour, so it wasn't all day and we didn't have DPW, you know, working, you know, ten, I hope he won't work in ten hours at that. But, and thank you again for the helicopter. It was fabulous. Thank you. They also know.
Have to be really quick because we're way outside of public comment, but you can ask.
It's about the safety along the path that with floodwaters.
You'll be able to talk to them after, and I'm, no, but here, hold on, hold on, hold on, can I just, because it's an official meeting, if we discuss something that's not on the agenda, we're committing an illegal act, but you can go over and ask. We're about to be done. I'm just gonna give a few announcements and then you'll be able to go and ask.
I can do it after.
Right, after, yes. And I'm, it's just.
Gotcha. No, thank you.
I do have a few. Thank you for everybody that did everything on the cleanup, but everybody has said that a National Night Out was absolutely wonderful. It was great, as are a lot of things that the Rec Department and all the people in Heartland put on. So very wonderful and outstanding. So great to see so many people coming together. The, I'm gonna fly through these really fast, but these are some announcements just to keep people up to date, because as emails come in, I figured I'll get the information out, so. I had a meeting with the, one of them was here with a couple of executives from Wausau State Bank on Friday. Went very well. Wonderful organization. I want to stress how much I appreciate that organization, what they do not only around Wausau County, but around southeastern Wisconsin. They really are wonderful. They were very nice. They were polite, very productive conversations and they were, they were wonderful. I just want to stress that. And the, I want to let people know on the thirteenth and twentieth, so the next two Wednesdays, there are information sessions. Postcards were sent out to everybody. It's on the website. Please go and check that. If you can't find any information on it, please call if you need any times on that. If you cannot make it to one of the information sessions, that doesn't mean you can't schedule a meeting so that you can get a tour of PD or the Fire Department or the Village Hall or, or any of these areas and sit down with someone to get answers for yourselves or for the residents. Feel free to reach out to any of the trustees or call the Village Hall and, and they'll take care of you while they're in office from seven thirty till four thirty. The resolution and necessity is in the process of being drafted. The resolution and necessity is something that in talking with our legal department, we would do no matter what if we were purchasing property, because it's not a good look, unless someone came begging for us to buy their property to, if we were to ever buy property, we would most likely never do it without the resolution and necessity, at least that's the guidance of our attorney. Along with that, after the resolution and necessity, just letting you know, we would probably, we would never really deal with any land without an appraisal of some sorts and we know, have a professional that does that for, you know, letting us know what it's worth. We had a few emails that come in asking about stuff. One of them that we had come in is tied closely to the Villager, former trustee, but they sent out an email and posted on Lake Country four oh one one saying that some things were illegal in Heartland. Anybody that wants to claim that, I think it was a hit piece. It was someone saying something to sensationalize. If you read to the bottom of the email that was put out or the bottom of the post that was put out, it says, it's illegal unless you have a public hearing, change the CIP and take steps, which we've done many different times. We would never do something illegal. Regarding one of the comments that came up, yes, we absolutely would look into if there was grant funding and restrictions, because we would never do that. If it was illegal, we wouldn't touch it. We would not do that, absolutely not. The Village Board doesn't make, doesn't make a habit of making backroom deals, doing things behind closed doors. We do try to push the information out, even though it may not seem that way. No one's going to be doing that. It makes me sad to hear, to think that the perception is out there, but the Village of Heartland and this board and, and us overseeing staff will not be doing things that are legal. If there was grants given for a piece of property, we won't be building anything there if it's not allowed. If, it's not like we're just gonna sneak something by and all of a sudden it's the, hey, it's the Jeff show. He just wants to build, so we're building. That's just not the way this works. I need to put my hat on my pillow at night too and I wouldn't be able to do it if I was doing that and you guys had busted me so fast even if I tried. So to be realistic right now, no one's doing any of that. I'm looking forward to these meetings that are coming up. I hope a lot of people come out to get their questions answered and to provide their opinions and their comments on what they want to see with the village, but also so they get a chance to talk with staff and talk with the, the members of the board. We've worked for a very long time on these, on this and, and the needs on what we want to do moving forward. So with that, if anybody does want to call the village or call us on the board field, I know some of you have emailed, planning on getting some of those answers out to people through these, these information sessions, but definitely the stuff that was, you know, if it's illegal, we wouldn't do it. If there was grant money where it's restricted, can't, can't build there, we wouldn't do it. So I just wanna, I hope everybody comes out that is really, really apprehensive about, you know, there's some people that have sent emails and when that starts, it, it starts to smolder that there's, something's going on in, in the back, in back rooms and that people are really trying to sneak stuff through. So I hope people come to the information sessions and, and all of those agendas and stuff for the last years and people can look and be like, okay, I didn't realize what that said, but that's what they were talking about all the time while it was on the agenda. But now we're trying to get that information out because people feel there wasn't enough out there. So please come to the information sessions or if you can't make it to one of them, call to see if you can set up a time that works for you so that we can get you any information that you feel you need. So, and that's for anybody watching, obviously. Huh? Can call Ryan. You could call myself so that we could set up a meeting where we'd be able to sit so that we can answer any questions you have, but also to make sure all that information is ready. You're gonna see different areas that we looked at, at the information sessions. We're gonna have that information. the information sessions. We're gonna have that information out, so that you can actually see, like on this meeting, we were looking at, you know, these different areas, and kind of catch everyone up to speed, so that not only do people have the information, but they can see that as the board was working on this, you know, we're going back and forth of what, what's the right thing to do here, also, as we are continuing to do so. It's not like we're at the end of the road, we're just in the middle of it, or, you know, so... But yeah, please feel free to call out. Absolutely, so we can set up a meeting. That'll be on the next meeting's agenda. Yep.
Does the lawyer do that?
Can't keep talking.
It would be, yeah, yes. And I'd be happy to talk with you more after, just because of the, but I don't have any other announcements. Great job, everybody, from a community standpoint, between great things like the night out, and the great things like coming together through the rain, and let's keep praying for anybody that did have any property damage, or anything that happened through the village.
Before I make this motion, one last thing, I don't know if it was mentioned, is the street dance on the twenty-third.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. All right, I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.